Okay, it is seven o'clock and I want to welcome everyone to the Palmyra Eagle Area School District Regular Board Meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Jean Reith.
Yes.
Cory Jones.
Yes.
Michael Eddy.
Yes.
Doris Parsons.
Yes.
Mitzi Reschewski.
Here.
Tom Novak.
Yes. With all seven members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. This time, mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, do we...
Oh, excuse me. I don't know if it's proper procedure to do this now, I'm rusty, or if it is at the time. Action Item C and Action Item D, I would like to consider tabling those.
We will do that at that time.
Thank you.
Anything else on the agenda? Hearing none, do we have an approval of the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
It's been properly motioned and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Public comment? Okay. All right. Seeing none of that, we'll move on to Board Montering. This time we'll start with Lower Spring Lake BP, Save for Kids. V?
It is my great pleasure to be the Chairperson of the PR Committee for the Palmyra Eagle School District, and at this time I would like to invite V, the owner of Lower Spring As a representative of the Palmyra Eagle School Board, it is my great pleasure and I'm extremely humbled to represent this group of people and the students of our school district, to honor you with this plaque for your extreme generosity. For those of you who aren't aware, V has graciously designated pumps three and four of the BP station here in Palmyra with two cents per gallon of every gallon of gasoline to a fund, Save for Kids, that has been put in Citizens Bank in Palmyra for the use of our students, our teachers, our staff, our family, and I can't begin to express our gratitude for this gesture. So if you have a few things you would like to say, then tell us how the program is going.
Thank you very much. The program is really going very well. So far, we had close to $2,000 in the account by the donation of friends and families and my regular customers, and the nine... Actually, I supposed to start from 1st of March, but I was so excited, I started on 20th of February, so from 20th to 29th, and then on 29th, the 5% of the total inside sale contributed to $366.85. So we have around about $1,950 in the account so far.
So as an expression of our gratitude, I would like to present you with this plaque. As a, as an expression of our gratitude, our woods teacher, Mike Hoff, is designing a sandwich board. You are the first recipient of our PR Stars Program. It will be displayed outside of your gas station until we designate our next star. Our English Department and our Art Department are also working on that sandwich board to be placed outside of your gas station.
Thank you very much. I'm honored.
Thank you so much. And we have a pin for you as well.
That's the best. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you, V. Good job.
Next, we have Scholar-Athlete Brandon Wild, SpectrumNewsOne.com.
I'm not Brandon Wild, but I'm pretty good. I'm gonna hit play out there.
She couldn't tell you the difference between a touchdown and a free throw, you know, but say you want to go up to the game, and her first question would be, is Brandon gonna be there?
If it's a sporting event, odds are pretty good that Brandon's gonna be there. On Friday nights in the fall, you could have seen him on a football field where he led the state in passing yards, and at halftime, he'd grab his trumpet and play with the band. Then, early the next morning, he'd catch a bus to run 3.1 miles in a cross-country meet.
There was times in the races you could see the pain on his face, and he would just keep pushing through that to help the team succeed. And so in a lot of ways, even though people see cross-country as an individual sport, I don't think he ever approached it that way. It was about what he could do to help the varsity be competitive.
By the time he graduates, Brandon will have collected 18 varsity letters. In the fall, he doubles up on football and cross-country. The wintertime means basketball, and in the spring, it's baseball and golf. All of this while carrying a 4.0 GPA with an advanced class load.
He's what we call a double-accelerated student in math, so he's taking freshman, sophomore years, he's taking classes that normally they take as juniors and seniors.
Brandon and those around him credit the small size of Palmyra Eagle for allowing to take on so many activities, but for a while last year, did this replace the possibility of dissolving? Brandon and others spoke up in meetings to try and save their school.
We are truly a family, and this really is a place where everyone knows your name.
To speak your heart, to plead for your school to be saved, and to inspire others in your class to get up and do the same thing, it was really impressive.
I felt like it was my duty, you know. My family's been here for generations, and I really, this school district is my everything, you know. They set me up with countless opportunities to succeed in life.
The future of the school district was up in the air. Two days before basketball practice began, the head coach resigned. Brandon reached out to someone who hadn't coached basketball in 30 years, a special someone whose name is on the home court.
So I'm over to his house that Friday night before the season started, and he says, "Grandpa Dewey, would you mind coming out of retirement and coaching the basketball team this year?"
With Brandon a point guard, the Palmyra Eagles team locked up their third straight conference championship this season. Also in January, a state-appointed board voted to keep the school district intact.
I felt like I had to do everything in my power to show the state that, you know, our community was worth it.
I know that my children are in the right place because we have children like Brandon and all the people that helped Brandon become the man that he is. We're here to do the same thing for my kids.
Just a side note on that, they also won regionals since that was filmed last Saturday, so that's really awesome. They move on and play again this Thursday in nearby O'Conne Walk at 7:00 PM. So she's gonna keep going along, and maybe we'll have another video for the next one.
Seven times since 1979.
I'm sorry, committee reports. Curriculum and Policy, met on February 25th and March 4th.
All right, thank you, Cory. Yes, we did meet twice since the last board meeting. We had Carrie Timms sit in on the last meeting to go through what the opportunities would be for the students in the coming school year. A lot of hard work went into that. It's kind of overwhelming to, in a very brief time, try to understand the level of detail that's required to provide the right options for these students. And as a parent, I was pretty excited to hear about a program that she's introducing. It's not her program, but it's an e-dynamics. They'll actually be offering 35 new courses this year that they haven't in subsequent years, that, everything from archaeology to forensics. It's pretty awesome. I think that just goes to show that the level of things that we need to do to stay viable as a school district. So Carrie, good job. We're gonna keep going. So we met, it sounds great, things are going in the right direction, and we meet one more time tomorrow night to discuss the grade school curriculum for this coming school year, so.
Thanks, Michael. Public Relations.
In Public Relations, we've been very busy. We met February 25th as well as March 3rd in your board packet, you will find Minutes. We created, we reviewed past practices for Public Relations and expanded on that, and thanks to some community members, we've added, we are adding a few more things to showcase our small school in the best light possible because of all those awesome things that are going on here. We're continuing to evaluate. We also have a meeting tomorrow at 5:30.
Thanks, Mitzi. Human Resource Committee report?
We did meet, and the minutes are in your packet. We discussed and reviewed the handbook, and we also discussed in what we thought would be coming in terms of some of the benefits, changes for 2021. We will have a follow-up meeting. For the HR Committee, the date is not set yet, but that will be coming. We'll discuss again the benefits and some of the edits that we saw that we may need to do to the handbook, so that will be coming in the next meeting.
Thanks, Jean. Administrators report?
Well, I've got one right here on the table in front of you, and that's the Treasurers' Report for the end of February, the reconciled report.
Okay.
And on the back of that is the taxes that have been received so far, which was very generous, really. We get about 73% of our taxes, so that was very helpful due to the fact that we didn't get our eight. So that came, that came in handy.
Thank you. Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is handled as one single vote. We have an approval for the consent agenda.
Is it approved, the consent agenda? Second.
Okay. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Action Items. Action Items, A, consider approval of early college credit program choices for Fall 2020 as presented.
I would move to approve the early college credit program choices for Fall of 2020 as presented, with the caveat of that if our new online courses cover those courses that they've applied for, as well as our AP course offerings, which are many, that those are offered within-house, that those are exempted from that list. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And that's per state statute.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else from anyone?
Well, just to clarify what Mitzi was saying.
The, there's quite a few that are awesome offerings, but it, we would, there are, that can be fluctuating what we are also offering as far as AP or other advanced classes, so we don't want to duplicate that and cause undue financial burden, so that's what the caveat is for. We talked with Carrie about that, so we don't have specific classes that that may happen with, but this way, if it could, we have the option.
One of the specific ones was astronomy, and we discovered that there are two astronomy offerings within our E classes that we would be able to save our taxpayers some money.
All those in favor of approving the, excuse me, early college credit program choices for Fall 2020 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Action Item B, consider approval of Start College Now program choices for Fall 2020 as presented.
I would move to approve the Start College Now program choices for Fall 2020 as presented, with the exact same caveat, that if it's offered in-house, either online or through AP, that we exempt those.
Second.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of Action Item B, approval of Start College Now program choices for Fall 2020 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Action Item C, approval of RJ Technologies' proposal for 2020, 2021 Instructional Technology Services.
I move to approve RJ Technologies' proposal for 2020 and 2021 Instructional Technology Services.
Um, no.
It's second or let it?
I will second it for comment.
Okay.
My comment is that this did not go through committee. It has not been discussed. I don't think it's been completely vetted. I'm not saying that it's maybe not appropriate, but I would like to investigate further to see if we could come up with a reduced cost as, well as, I'm just not comfortable on it being on an action item at this time. I would have preferred to have postponed it, but having said that, that's why I will be voting against the motion to approve it.
Yeah, I would like time to review it. I didn't see any of it. I don't know the cost. I mean, we saw it, but just briefly, and I do think we should, need to shop some things out a little more in depth.
You can't second, you've already moved to approve it, you can't then reduce another motion. You have to table it, you have to vote on it.
You can refer to the committee. The motion is up to the committee. Refer to a committee, refer to a specific committee. Okay.
I think we have to vote to refer.
Yeah. Yeah. Action Item C, approval of RJ Technologies' proposal for 2021 Instructional Technology Services has been moved to refer to committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries to refer to committee. Action Item D, approval of Letter of Employment for District Network Technician.
I would move that that also be referred to the Finance Committee.
Move the motion first.
You have to do the motion first.
Okay.
So I move to...
Just move the tablet.
...for District Network Technician.
I'll second that.
I would move to refer it to Committee, Finance Committee.
Second.
Approval of Letter of Employment for District Network Technician has been moved to refer to committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Action Item E, consider approving Jeff Tortomasi as consultant for Special Palmyra Eagle Area School District Projects.
I would move to approve Jeff Tortomasi as consultant for Special PEASD Projects.
Second that.
Any discussion?
I would like to thank Mr. Jeff Tortomasi for his gracious offer of working for such low, his amount of experience and his rate of pay that he's negotiated for, with us is, well, above and beyond. Thank you so much, and we'll try to get every penny's worth we can.
Okay. It's been properly motioned and seconded to approve Jeff Tortomasi as consultant for Special Palmyra Eagle Area School District Projects. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Action Item F, consider approving the closure of an elementary school building.
I would move that we approve the closure of Eagle, or, excuse me, Palmyra Elementary School as an action item.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to close the Palmyra Elementary School Building. Do we have any discussion on that?
I would also...
I would respectfully disagree, Mr. Novak. I believe that our workshop came back with answers, and we did our due diligence in looking at our expenditures. There were some things that were omitted, I believe, and I thank Carol for everything she did do with our presentation that we had during our workshop. However, I believe very strongly that the Palmyra Eagle Area School District cannot survive without a school in the Eagle community, and that it is short-sighted to delay this decision any longer, as our families need to make decisions, and we owe it to our students and our taxpayers to move forward in a direction that's fiscally responsible. Most of the decisions we've made tonight have been very well-vetted and cost-conscious. I think we're doing our due diligence, and it's now time to take a leap of faith and take the action necessary so our families can join in with us and support our district.
May I ask?
Pardon me?
I have some information I'd like to just pass out. And we can just, we're going to discuss it here then and stuff.
And again, I would, I would disagree. The results of the Finance Committee were that we should close the Palmyra Elementary based on the $150,000-plus savings of closing that building versus closing Palmyra. So I would say that we should close Eagle Elementary versus closing Palmyra based on the busing savings and the no plan to house, monitor, supervise every child that rides the bus from Palmyra 45 minutes to an hour every day after school.
I believe the action item is to close an elementary school, it's not to decide which elementary school. I believe the, the motion was to close Palmyra Elementary School. I would agree with Mitzi that I would not want to send this to committee. I think the Finance Committee does not meet until next month prior to the board meeting, unless I'm, I'm misunderstanding that. Our administrators need to get moving. This is not a popular thing. It's not a popular decision whatsoever. Whichever building is going to be chosen is going to cause unhappy, hurt feelings for a lot of people, but there's no way we can operate with both of them open, and it's no, it's not doing anyone any good prolonging it continually. I would ask that, that we vote. And the motion is to close Palmyra Elementary School. Love the building, it's great, and there's, we could, we could debate this till the end of next year, and all we're gonna do is end up dissolving the district because we can't operate with both of them open. So we need to make a decision. A lot of us are sitting here because we said we'd make the difficult decisions, and I think we need to do it.
It's really a matter of logistics. I know Justin has, has talked with Blaine and Administration has, and they've gone over the busing routes, and I wasn't satisfied that I had gotten enough information, so I sat down with Blaine and Sue yesterday for about an hour and a half, and I, I put this together, and we do have to go through this because the logistics of it would be very difficult, and, and we need some of these questions answered, and that's why I suggested we refer this back to the committee to discuss this. And we, the Finance Committee can meet with proper noticing, we can meet soon and, and go through all this. So there's, as you look through the sheet here, there's the background. So our elementary school hours are 7:50 to 2:55. The high school starts earlier at 7:40 and goes a little bit longer to 3:05. And our current bus routes in Palmyra and in Eagle are about 45 to 50 minutes, and on those buses, the students are separated from, you know, the young kids sit up front and the older students are in the back of the bus. So we have, we have two different scenarios, so either we close Palmyra or we close Eagle. So if we close Palmyra Elementary, there's no change in the Palmyra or Eagle bus route, so we, we have no savings there. And then we have to add three shuttle bus routes, because if 4K gets, or, excuse me, if sixth grade gets moved up here, we'd have approximately 150 students to transport, transport over to Eagle Elementary, and that's about $60 per bus trip, and when you pencil that all out, that's about an additional $65,000 a year. And if you look at currently eligible students that ride the bus in the Palmyra area are 87 students, there's about 190 students total at Palmyra Elementary. So now if we go down to close Eagle, we would remove one Eagle bus route right away, and then possibly two routes if we could combine Palmyra and Eagle where they, where they touch each other on the east and west sides of, of each area. So, and currently, we have two Eagle Elementary buses dedicated, and there's three middle school and high school routes, and we would not be adding any additional routes. And right now there are 67 students eligible in Eagle to ride the bus, and there's approximately 135 students. So that's all the, that's background information. So now, if we would close Palmyra as proposed, so the mechanics for Eagle students, we're not going to change their delivery to school. They'll go to school just as they always have. Now, the mechanics for the Palmyra area students, now the bus routes are 45 to 50 minutes to get the students to, to here. And the buses arrive over a 10 to 15 minute period. They all don't show up at exactly the same time. So now all students will get off the bus here at the middle school, high school because we won't have an elementary school anymore. And then the K four to five students will have to wait somewhere over that 10 to 15 minute period before they board three buses to Eagle. So when you have that, where do 150 students wait, and especially in bad weather? So who's going to be in charge of those 150 students from K four through fifth grade? And then how many staff will it take to supervise those 150 students? So at this point, some students, between waiting at the bus stop and getting on the bus and drive, riding to school, they'll be on the bus an hour already. So you could have some K four, K five first graders already on the bus an hour. So now if they need to use the bathroom before they board the bus to go to Eagle, how you handle that is another question. These are, these are, these are just, what do you do about these things? We can't just ignore these issues. So now, we have three shuttle buses that are going to take our students over to Eagle. Those buses are already out on route, so when those kids come in, there aren't just three buses sitting here waiting for them to just go on. They have to come in here or outside or somewhere in, in all weather to, to, to wait for those buses. And then once they're on the bus to Eagle, it's approximately 18 minutes, according to Blaine, to get from here to the Eagle Elementary. So now if you look at the time parameters, the buses arrive here between 7:25 and 7:35, and then the K four to five students will board those buses and leave for Eagle at 7:45. They'll arrive at Eagle at 8:05. School can start about 8:15. And this is best case not having poor weather. And then the school day will have to end at 2:40 to get students on the bus at 2:45 for that 18 minute, 20 minute ride back here, where they arrive at 3:05. They all get off with all the high school and middle school students already going out to find buses. And then they have to get, either walk home from here or they gain, get on a bus. So you're, you're going to have little children mixing with all the older kids. So some of the ramifications here, if you close Palmyra, the student day would be between 8:15 and 2:40 PM per day. So students are going to lose 40 minutes of instruction per day. So my question is, how do we make that time up?
You can. You've got to end the school day 40 minutes later.
So K four to five students are intermixed with the middle school, high school students finding a place to wait both morning here and at night. And then the chance of students getting lost twice a day, every day, while transferring buses is, is a real, a real issue. And, and Blaine had talked about that. So with this scenario, the Palmyra area, K four, the five students would spend up to one and a half hours on a bus and transferring morning and night. And then if you would extend the elementary school day 40 minutes, you can only do that on the back end because the kids are getting up early. I mean, the first kids get on the bus at 6:40 in the morning, and you're not going to have students get on the bus any earlier than that. So if you extend it for 40 minutes on the back end, now what do you do with the high school and middle school kids that are sitting here? And they're going to wait 45 minutes to an hour to get on a bus? These are just the logistics of it. So now if we closed Eagle, Eagle buses would pick up all the outlying students as they normally do. And then probably two of those buses would go and pick up what Blaine calls pods of students, whether they meet, you know, at different areas, in subdivisions or, or downtown. It would pick those kids up and then it would head to Palmyra to go to the elementary school. The Palmyra routes would be unchanged, except maybe we could eliminate one more route by combining where, where the, the Eagle and Palmyra kids overlap. So the ramifications, if you close Eagle, that all the Palmyra students are on a bus 45 to 50 minutes. All the Eagle students are on a bus about 50 to 55 minutes because Blaine said when they go out into country and then they come back into town, it might take five or 10 minutes more than, than a normal route would. But all the kids are on the bus less than an hour. And then the return route is the same, and there are no extra bus transfers for all these young students. And we have no additional busing costs, and we're going to remove one route, possibly two, and we don't have a $65,000 a year shuttle route either, if you would close Eagle. So I understand the issues of closing Eagle. It's just the logistics of this. It's how you, how do you do this without increasing? Like Blaine said, we could increase buses, but at $50,000 a bus route, I don't think you're going to do it with just two or three more buses to be able to pick up kids and get everybody to start school on the same time and gather the kids. The district is large. We have the Kellam and Rain in between. It, it's not a, it's not a simple district to do this with. So we need to answer all these questions before we can come to a decision to close either school.
I agree, and a lot of the things you brought up, I think, are completely legitimate. But I also don't think we can continue to operate on, you're, you're operating on the way we do bus routes right now, still using Blaine. You're operating on, this is, we're going to, we're going to keep going like this. We can't do that anymore. What we have to do is recognize, yes, we as a district do not want little kids on a bus for an hour and 15 minutes. We got to figure it out. Yes, we as a district do not want kids standing around outside in the cold for an hour, waiting for a bus to pick them up. So we got to figure that out. But the sooner we tell our administrators that, hey, this is coming your way, these are challenges, you have to figure them out, the more apt they're going to be able to do it. So I, there are going to be issues, but we have, we have to think outside the box and work outside the box. We have asked to have our bus routes priced out by another company. I, I, Blaine's a great guy, but they actually are, they tell us what we have to pay and what we have to do. We've got to start making decisions that are best for the children and best for the students, best for our families, and just saying we're going to run the same old bus route or it's going to cost us more. I don't, I don't think we can do that. I think we have to say, I think everything you brought up is completely legitimate, and we need to work on it, and we need to change it, because I don't think we'd accept that. But we have to figure out a way to change it.
The way we go and change this is we just refer it back to the committee, take time over the next week or two, and we can get a lot of these things answered, but we can't make, because we can't just wish it away.
We won't wish it away. We'll work it away, and we'll make the changes as needed in order to make, to work with the decision we're going to make tonight. I don't think that having a busing issue be the only issue brought to us is the only issue we're all considering. We've all taken a lot of time to think this through. There are other issues that affect this situation, open enrollment. It's, you cannot have a surviving Palmyra Eagle area school district without an Eagle school. So to me, this is issues. Thank you very much. We'll work through them, but we'll, we'll decide tonight, and then we can make those changes as needed. Blaine's not the only bus transportation that's available to us. We can figure these things out.
Not only can we figure these things out, we can help Blaine to help us figure these out in a more cost effective manner. There are many schools that have more schools that are moving their children, and they do it. There's no reason we can't move children from Palmyra to Eagle without examining those. And I understand your thoughts, and I really do appreciate them. Anyone who has seen me with children knows that I don't want a four-year-old to have to wait for a bus and maybe have an accident. But I would remind you that I told you that my five-year-old, because it was needed for this district, got on the drop-off route as a pickup at just turning five and rode the bus for an hour and 15 minutes. I'm not asking anyone to do something that I haven't put my own family through. And I think that for the benefit of the people who were responsible in knowing what district they moved into and want to attend this school district and live in the community where I live, that they deserve to have a school in their community. The other factor is that while we are talking about bus routes, we need to consider the whole situation. We can sell Palmyra Elementary much easier and get an influx of cash into this district that is needed to drop some of our overhead. We can't forget that, and we need to have our school be marketable.
I say let's vote, get this over with. We, we know what the financial impact is. That's why we're all here. That's my opinion.
Did you call for the vote? I didn't hear you at the beginning.
So, yeah, I'm, I would say we vote and.
I would agree with Justin, call for vote.
Again, we know what the financial impact is. Everyone's got their own opinion, but at this juncture, the thing Tom put together, we know, we knew all these things. Again, because that's the same meaning I have with Blaine. Everyone's aware of, or should be aware, at least at this point, of all those informations and the, and the potential hiccups that are going to come with it. So unless someone has some new piece of information, I would say. Move to roll call vote. And the vote is to close Eagle.
No.
No, I mean, sorry.
Okay. There's been a call for the vote on the approving the closure of Palmyra Elementary School building. Tracy, roll call, please.
Michael Eddy? Tom Novak?
No.
Doris Parsons?
Yes.
Jean Reith?
Yes.
Mitzi Rocheski?
Yes.
Justin Thomas?
No.
Corey Jones?
No.
Believe that was four yes to three no. So the approving the closure of Palmyra Elementary passed. Action item G, consider approving layoff notices to Palmyra Eagle area school district teachers as recommended.
I would move to approve layoff notice to P E A S D teachers as recommended in our board packet.
It's been properly moved and seconded of the approval of layoff notices to the P E A S D teachers as recommended. Any discussion?
I would just like to point out that the majority of these notices, actually, I believe all of the notices were, are issued to teachers who signed a one-year contract. It is our intent to, as we get more students, do whatever we possibly can, but we think it's the most fair thing to our staff to allow them the opportunity to seek employment elsewhere. If that's what they choose to do, we don't want to stifle their lives and their opportunities. I truly wish that we could have all of them because I know that they are all great teachers.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor of approving layoff notices to the P E A S D teachers as recommended, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anything for? No.
Whatever is in your packet.
Right, okay. District administrators report, since we don't have Mr. Boom, Dr. Boom here this evening. We don't have that, so. Any announcements and board comments?
Yeah, oh, sorry. We had our Palmyra Eagle FFA alumni gathering at T and D's this weekend, and we had an incredible turnout, outpouring from the community. We tried a live auction this year, which was incredibly successful, and we raised over $12,000 in one night. And all that money goes right back into the FFA program for student trips, leadership activities, you name it. So thank you to everybody that donated, that came out, spent money on pressure washers, et cetera. So thank you.
Okay. Upcoming meeting and events. Our next regular board meeting will be at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, April 14th, right here. This time I will, we consider a motion to adjourn to closed session. The board will consider a motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.851C, to wit, to consider employment compensation and evaluation data regarding one or more employees over which the board exercises jurisdiction and responsibility. To wit, A, consider approval of individual administrator contracts.
Motion?
Motion. It's been, okay, motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Be about five minutes.